I'd like to, first of all, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year to everyone. And we'll call the -- call the order of the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting Tuesday, December 18th at 10:01 a.m. Please stand for a moment of prayer and then for the pledge. I want to thank you.
So we pray. Dearly Father, come before you in your shoes. Thank you, Lord, for giving us the greatest gift you ever given your Son. This time of the year, we celebrate the birth of our Savior and we say thank you for touching so many hearts. We say Merry Christmas to many people. Lord, we thank you for that opportunity. Lord, we bless the families that have lost a dear precious child in Newtown, Connecticut. May they feel the Holy Spirit around them and carry them through this. Help the extended families of these dear children to continue to be there for these parents in the upcoming years. Father, we repent of our sins of our culture that produce monsters of destruction. I pray, Lord, that you touch Hollywood that they may turn their skills to promoting righteousness, purity, and love and peace, and move the leaders of public education to put God back at the center of our school systems and to teach and take command as guidance for our youth. May we remember Luke 22, that we are responsible to protect ourselves from acts of aggression. Also, Father, grant that patriarch Christians will step up to the challenge of leaving America in a new direction. Please bring this nation under control of the Holy Spirit. Make this Christmas the most Christ-centered Christmas in our history and help turn something that has been demonic and evil into the beginning of a national spiritual awakening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments on the agenda items?
I want to publicly thank the commissioners for supporting the Ten Commandments Monument in Conneville. We will be putting this on a piece of granite and bringing it to the February meeting. And we're so very excited that you have decided to join in this fight and help us and calling it a historic landmark. We thank you so much for doing what you have done. Thank you. I think we can give a big round of applause.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, Pastor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Are there any other public comments on the agenda items? Yes, John?
Sure, just briefly. I have, if I may, I have to ask the approach. Okay. This is the audit information that you folks are going to be required to fill out by the PUC. And what it does is outlines, pardon me, sir. What it does is outlines the expenditures that you make for what I'll call Act 13 money. Okay? In my reading of the law, it says use of funds, it says a county or municipality receiving funds shall use the funds only for the following purposes associated with natural gas production from unconventional gas wells within the county. Okay? And the following page is a list, which, in the interest of brevity, I won't read. But what this list does not include is using impact fee funds to prop up an underfunded pension plan. I did, you're talking about $110 impact fee money going to prop up a pension plan, I'm sorry. Is that true?
Hundred and ten thousand.
A hundred and ten, hundred and ten grand?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the last number I ever remembered.
The, so not only, I did a word search on the Act passed by the Pennsylvania Legislature. There is not one word that addresses pension funds, retirement funds, benefits to county employees. So in my view, your plan to spend that money is out of bounds. Furthermore, PUC provides us guidance. It says law is specific on how money can be spent. Again, water, wastewater, road maintenance, all the things you would associate with impacts related to natural gas drilling in Fayette County. So my first question to you, sir, Mr. Amberstein, if you would, how is a pension plan related to the impact fee? What, what impacts upon the pension plan in natural gas drilling production in Fayette County? How are they related?
Well, John, you were, you are correct in your assumption that, that, you know, there's a lot of things in the Act that aren't specifically addressed to not support, which means that the, the Act is fairly vague. And, and so I think these are items that will be hashed out by the solicitors in, in the future.
Do we have a solicitor's opinion on whether or not the use of impact fee money is appropriate?
If I may, Mr. Lynch had conveyed the provision, or the portion that you're referring to was monies due to the county's general fund based on a lack of payment by the courts of their employees' ARC. And he classified under judicial services.
Under what kind of?
Judicial services, which refers to, I think, item 10 on the list of appropriation.
Okay, so that's the solicitor. Is Mr. Lynch a solicitor?
Mr. Lynch is our.
Okay, well, I've contacted Crystal Savage, and she is the Assistant Counsel of the Public Utility Commission. And what Crystal says, Ms. Savage says, is we need a solicitor's opinion, not an economic advisor's opinion or a financial advisor's opinion, but a solicitor's opinion that can look at the law and say yea or nay. Does this meet the standard? Is it a qualitative expenditure for funds? That's from the PUC. And yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak with Eric Rohrbach, Deputy Chief Counsel, Public Utility Commission. His fund number 717-787-5000. These are the folks that are administering this money. What Mr. Rohrbach says is, Deputy Counsel, is that PUC will not provide you with a legal decision, but what he will say is, in his reading of the law, he seeks no reference at all to pension funds being an appropriate expenditure of impact fee money, Mr. Rohrbach's opinion. So I guess in the interest of.
John, if I could ask a quick question.
Sure.
Did he say it wasn't an appropriate expense?
Well, if you look at, if you look at your audit report that you're going to be compelled to file by, by April, let's do it this way. Could you pick out pension fund in this group?
There's a lot of things you can't pick out, John.
No, I disagree. Law specific, not law general, not if some idea pops into your head, law specific, and it outlines impacts related to natural gas. It doesn't talk about shortfalls in your budget. It doesn't talk about how you satisfy promises made or expectation of your employees. It talks about dealing with impacts related to natural gas. So that's pretty specific. Now, getting back to the Act, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to make reference, out of 13 monies that we budgeted, we used a portion for our 911 system.
Okay.
Would you deem that as a?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I took the liberty of plugging some numbers in here to my sheet. So $570,000 for the 800 megahertz switch, IROCC, right?
To transfer to.
Right, right. So that's very clear, emergency preparedness, public safety, no argument. Everybody can make that connection. What could be better? I mean, just think back to West Virginia, they just had a spectacular explosion, fireball melted the highway, gorillas, blah, blah, blah. Nobody can make the argument against emergency preparedness.
We also used it for the state extension.
Got you that. $60,000 under management conservation districts. No stretch, no argument. That is perfectly acceptable in my view. It's reasonable in respect that you would have additional workload on the conservation district. Okay. Let's see if I can, these pages separated here. And I believe we have $28,000 records management. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Seems reasonable. No argument. I see no mention whatsoever of using this money for pension funds. None whatsoever. And that is the issue of my challenge. And what I formally request here is first, a solicitor's opinion, because that's the first step in the process of making a formal complaint. Okay? So I need a solicitor's opinion of is this yea or nay an appropriate expenditure of money? Is that fair enough? Then we'll take it from there.
John, just to, just to let you know what the process is going to be here, every one of these items that, that comes out of, or every purpose of money coming out of Act 13 will be voted on after the first of the year in a resolution. So they'll be voted on individually.
Actually, it should be voted on today because it's part of the general fund budget revenue. So we have to do it simultaneously.
Yeah, I think you have, you have to kind of know where you're going with the cash by, by accounting period.
Right, we can't pass the general fund.
But listen, I don't want to tie up with a lot of them, but I.
We're not going to delay the passage of this budget. If we have to, we have to amend the agenda to itemize and make, pass resolutions regarding the 13 funds, then we'll do so at this meeting.
We can do both, and that is what your consultants suggested, that a resolution be passed or more so a shell.
Well, then I'll make a motion.
And we should be passing the budget today as well as the impact fees and budget.
Well.
Today, because the revenue goes into the general fund.
Well, there's a lot, there's a number of things in the general fund that will be voted on after the first of the year.
Okay, I'll leave you with this, and y'all can work this out. Mr. Rohrbach, Deputy Chief Counsel, okay? Like I said, he would not give me a legal opinion, but what he did say is, if you plug a number or an activity into this audit that doesn't match the intent and purpose of the impact fees, that's a red flag. Tell you in advance. Fair enough, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend.
Happy holidays.
Is there any other comments on any of the agenda items? Yes, Mr. Petrusi?
I have a pocket for each of the resolution that each township passed in their meeting here.
I was supposed to.
At December meeting. It's the same resolution passed by each township. This resolution was or will be passed by all 24 townships at their respective December meeting. It was done so in unity through the common fact that township government is by far the most impacted government body stemming from the gas well drilling process. We have presented our position at the previous commissioners meeting and would hope that you would use your good judgment in helping us in our never ending endeavor of providing safe roads for our citizens to travel.
As I told you, Mr. Petrusi, I have no problems in sitting down with you folks and engaging in developing some program utilizing a portion of the Act 13 money. I think that, you know, there is some responsibility or partnership, let's say, more than anything. And I'd be willing to do that, whether it be some form of quasi-CDBG program or quasi- liquid fuel replacement program, something of that nature, I would, I'd be willing to sit down and, and work out the numbers.
Well, my concern now, gentlemen brought up and Angela brought up, is can this be worked out now? Does it have to be worked out now since the budget has to be passed?
No, no, no.
The budget includes Act 13 money, as Mr. Chalkton just stated, for the 2012, as well as even setting aside monies to be used out of Act 13, 2013 monies that we haven't even received. Okay? All of that, and that's for 911 actually to switch, all of that obviously has a bearing on the general fund budget that we passed today. So they should be, for those funds that are going to be taken from the Act 13 shell monies, impact fee for 2012, they should be voted on today simultaneously with our general fund budget. And for 2013, we can handle that in the year 2013. Well, actually, because we haven't yet received those funds, can't vote on, it would be, it would, in my opinion, be wrong to vote on Act 13, 2013 monies when we haven't yet even received them. But there are, there are monies set aside even for those purposes. But, but yes, we should be stipulating by a resolution the decisions that we made in the general fund budget.
So, but 13 monies is in a separate account, not included in the general fund. Is that correct, Mr. Valley?
Of course it is, but, but those.
So that's, those funds are separate from the general fund?
They're not separate from the general fund. If you look at the general fund budget that we are going to pass today. You will see transfers in and out of Act 13 money.
Because we're going to utilize a portion of it for, as we just referred to, the 911 and some other.
What's the difference between doing it today and doing it next month?
No, I agree with you. We'll do it today. No, I have no problem. I'm talking about other, other items that we would have put into the 13 money. We don't know what those are yet.
Well, of course, we're only going to vote individually on those items, the, the ARC, the.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant.
The ones that are in 213.
Right, right. But I mean, any other 13 proposals, we'd have to work out and then such, and then bring it back to another commissioners meeting.
Correct, correct.
And it has to be a resolution.
Today, we, today, we should be voting on one resolution, yea or nay, for Act 13 monies to be used towards the ARC pension of $110,000. Conservation District of $60,000, that's another resolution. Records Department, $28,340 to cover a portion of the individual's salary. And the fourth is the Motorola payment, $502,590. Those are four resolutions that go simultaneously with passing of this budget. Nothing, nothing else, because nothing else is covered in this budget. Those other items to be taken from the Marcel Show impact fee would be done at a later time.
Correct.
Because we haven't made a decision.
Well.
Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. So, so a decision's been made by passing of the general fund budget, a decision has been made for at least four uses of the impact fee in 2012, which is what we will vote on today.
Have you guys ever discussed our, our proposal?
No, I didn't.
Or even know of our proposal?
Us three together in a room, no.
Well, your proposal was 60 percent. The proposal that you had made.
What we really wanted to do is to sit down and discuss it and something.
The proposal was 60 percent. As I told you, and I say it on record, I would engage in, in discussion to develop some programming comparable to cover for the losses, or at least in part of the losses of the CDVG program and the liquid fuel. I mean, just, just quasi, I'm not saying label them under those titles.
Okay, so you heard his opinion on it. I read in the paper, Commissioner Amberstein, he said he wanted to do it on a case-by-case basis with each township and each project.
Is that correct?
That's what I read in the paper. He'd have to tell you if, if he was quoting correctly.
The program that I would, if we sat down and negotiated, would be to, for you to submit requests to this board, and we would look at those on a case-by-case basis, on their, on their merit, and based on what the counties, you know, obviously, we have to look at prioritizing use of the money both county-wise and, and municipality-wise. And most of that money, I mean, I'll be quite honest with you, Joe, most of that money's going to be used to benefit the municipalities anyway, whether, whether it's from a specific request or if it's just an agreement. We would prefer.
Of the Board of Commissioners.
We would prefer an agreement with a percentage or at least in the first few years of this.
Well, does anyone want to know my opinion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Here's my opinion on it, okay? First off, there are, at the end of today, after this budget is passed, out of the 213, Act 13, 2012 funds, we will have about $500,000 left. Started out with 1.4, we're going to spend $705,000, give or take, okay? What my opinion is, is number one, I don't agree to do a agreement with a certain percentage for this year and years to come, only because, with the townships, with the municipalities, only because we don't know how much our impact fees will be in future years. Okay? It's, right now, we're, this year, 1.4. I don't, I don't know what our impact fee will be for next year.
Yeah, it's, it's going to flush away.
Right.
Up and down.
Right, so that's why I don't want to enter into a specific agreement with municipalities for a specific percentage.
You would rather.
For, for this year and, and future years.
You would rather revisit it each year.
Yes, yes, because of what I just said. But as far as sitting down and the commissioners picking and choosing, or negotiating with municipalities on what projects and what municipalities, no. I think that you, as the township supervisors, you, you govern your own area, you know what your needs are, you know what the impact fees are used for, I would prefer to give us that amount out of that $500,000. Now, would it be 60 percent? No.
No.
Would it be the 50 percent? No. But it would be, it would be a specific amount for each township. The townships, I believe that it would be beneficial to them, the 24 townships, for the same amount in each township. That's what you had said last.
Well, the, the only reason we were talking about percentages was because the amounts do change.
Right.
Now, at some point when, and I believe there's going to be a flurry of activity in 2015 where a lot of wells are going to be drilled, it's going to go up next year and maybe the year after, it's going to go down for a while. So rather than putting a price or, you know, how much money you can give us if you went with a percentage, it would help us in, because we can do projections, we're doing some projections in our budget.
Right, but we, we as a county also, we don't know what is going to come our way as far as what our expenses might be in, in the manner of how we will be impacted in the year 2013 or 2014, and they need some of those monies. And that is why I would not want to commit a certain percentage for future years. Now, for this year here, if it turns out to be a dollar figure or a percentage, it doesn't, I mean, the bottom line is the bottom line, but not for the future. I, I want to revisit it on, on every year.
Would you like to hear what our proposal would be?
Sure. I am. The county portion's $1,448,963. The nine, what we thought about doing, we have, as far as CDVG money goes, we have nine entitled townships. There were 11, two were just cut out. So they, they went from about 100 grand a year down to nothing. And it's 15, now 15 non-entitled townships. Yeah, personally, I never thought that was fair.
It isn't.
Of course, you know, we're going to take the money in our township. And all it is, federal funds coming back to you. So what we propose would be the 15 non-entitled townships getting $15,000 from the county each, and the nine entitled townships getting $10,000 each. That would leave the county with $1,133,563.
Minus the $700,000 we're going to spend today.
Yeah.
Or we're, we're going to earmark these down for that.
Yes. That would be about $315,000 to the townships. And I can assure you that that money would be spent prudently, effectively, as we always do.
Well, it would also go to the point of, of the audit. We would have to determine what the use would be in order to justify the expenditure, would we not?
We would have to, yeah, we'd have to work that out. We'd have to follow the guidelines.
The CDVG monies are for sewer, water, and road projects.
Yeah.
Hence the impact fee. Right.
And it's basically the same.
The other thing too is, you know, last time you were here, there was a lot of conversation about, you know, the county bridges and, you know, the monies that are needed for that. Well, all along, we, we did, all of us received an email that says that the office has PUC and CCAP and PENDOT. The final numbers are in for how much each of the counties will receive for their at-risk bridges. Now, we all knew, and if we, if anyone didn't know, they should have known, that, that each county was going to get a minimum of $40,000 for our at-risk bridges. That's been talked about at public meetings that, that we held in the evenings for the, for the Marcel Show impact. We all knew it was going to be a minimum of 40,000, but it's based on population. Well, they did issue a final report, it was just issued a few days ago, that with the TIP program, PENDOT, CCAP, and SPC, which is, Commissioner Amberstein and I both serve on, so I knew that, I knew this, we're actually going to get around $191,000 in Fayette County for our at-risk county bridges. So that's going to help. That's, that's monies that hasn't even been talked about yet today or even last month. That's in addition to what we're talking about with the 1.44 million.
I think we'll have some, some gaming money too.
Yeah, we got, we're going to get $191,000, 962 for bridges.
Which, so when you heard conversation at the last month's meeting, well, we need also to utilize some of those impact fees for county bridges, nothing was said about the 40 minimum to, and like I said, we just found out 192 for argument sake, 192,000 for argument sake.
Yeah, we just notified it out a few days ago.
But, but, yeah, we just, I only mean, we, we knew that we were going to get 40, but based on population, we can all do calculations, and we knew it was going to be a little bit more than that. We have like 136,000 people, so you can do your calculations.
Well, based on what we're asking for, that's approximately 20 percent. So, you know, if you would think about that percentage thing again, maybe try to do an ordinance in the future, it doesn't have to be this year, you know? You know, there's some real, real advantages to that for you and us. It gives us some, some stability in knowing what we might be getting. I mean, we know, we know what's going to come next year, and it's going to be less. If we knew we were getting 20 percent of that, we could figure that into our budgets. What we're trying to do here is make up for money, CDVG money we lost in other revenues that we've lost. We continue to lose money each year instead of gaining money. There's always the, you know, you could raise taxes, but nobody really wants to do that.
Let's never forget, we're losing money from which entities? The federal and the state government.
Vote, vote.
Okay, so, I mean, let's keep our eye on the ball. That's where the cuts are being made, and, and the results are being felt at lower levels of government.
Yes.
And I think that's irresponsible of those, those two branches.
We can all agree on that.
Sure. The, the county certainly is not immune to those cuts either. We're going to work. We're going to work, we're getting hit pretty hard from state in front of cuts, so, you know, it's a balancing act, you know, certainly we'll be more than willing to work with you. I would suggest we set up a meeting and start to-
We've been trying to get that since April, huh?
Start to, well-
If we could.
You know, we just need to, we just need to set it up and start the dialogue.
Want to set a date?
I feel it has to be a meeting. It has to be a public meeting.
After the holiday, I, we could set up a date.
Yeah.
I don't know if you would want to do anything before the holiday, but I-
Well, I mean, if we had an official proposal of what we want, couldn't we just vote on that?
We, well, yeah, I mean, that's a possibility, but we're going to have questions on anything.
I thought we had a porking argument last month, and we would surely answer-
Last month, you wanted 60% and-
Starting point.
Well, that's a part of, that's a-
I don't want to, I don't want to negotiate-
We're down to 20 today. We're down to begging right now.
Well, as I said, I don't think we need to beg. I think what we need to do is, is sit down and develop a program, whether it be on a percentage basis. We all three have different but same ideas. I think we need to figure out which one is palatable to the consensus of this board and move forward.
One thing that we all want is for our constituents to benefit from this, you know? You want the same things as we want, you know? So, as long as there's no adversarial positions here, and we work together-
It's got to be a partnership, and I think we can accomplish that goal, because those bridges that we're talking about are connected to township roads, and most likely-
All of them.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can, we need to partner, we need to work together to, as you said, make a safe system for our constituency.
I don't think it's all that complicated.
I don't need to-
You know how much money you have, we know what our needs are, and just come up with the figure, and it's mathematics.
There you go.
That's all it is.
It is.
I agree.
In addition, I think it's important for the township and municipalities to know what kind of burden is on the county also, you know? So, I think the information flowboat directions is important to come up with an equitable solution.
We've discussed that, too, at our meetings, and we do realize, you know, which guys' problems are good. Okay, let's do that, please. Thank you so much for hearing us.
Thank you, Joe.
Al, should I just add one thing? You know, we can sit here all day and hash this out, and just like Joe stated, and you guys as well, where we asked for this meeting, so-called meeting, months ago, and it doesn't have to be a meeting, it can be a work session, where nothing is going to be decided that particular day, any decisions made, we can hash this thing out, we can sit here all day and hash it out. I think that's what we really need to do. So, you know, we have a committee in place with you three guys, or, you know, two guys and lady who are willing to sit down with us, that's what we need to do, and I think that's where we're going to make more accomplishments than anything. So, we could call it a work session, we could do it at your leisure, whatever, you know, and it comes to some conclusion.
Right. Thanks, Joe. Any other public comment on agenda items?
We're going to have to amend the agenda to include the passage of, the passage of the utilization of Act 13 money.
Well, Vince, before you go there, let me make some comments on that. I think that, first of all, you know, obviously, the passage of the budget is on the agenda. I would feel a little uncomfortable, you know, since, since we talked about passing the Act 13 resolutions on a case-by-case basis throughout the course of the year, I would feel a little uncomfortable with making those resolutions until we've had, you know, our solicitors look at those uses on a case-by-case basis also.
But then your budget's not going to-
But, have you, we haven't passed the budget.
Yeah, the budget's not going to be able to balance because those revenues are in the general fund budget.
Should there be a issue with any expenditure, we would then have to address that.
I'm not sure that's actually the case. Maybe Solicitor Cup, let me say something before I ask Mr. Cup a question. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of revenues in this budget that are anticipated, even the property tax, you know, we're not going to get that till sometime next year. So, I'm not sure that it's actually necessary to pass these resolutions. Now, I mean, obviously, we're going to pass additional resolutions later on in the 2013 budget year anyway. So, I don't feel that it's necessary nor appropriate to pass those, the Act 13, even those four items that we have in the budget today.
It's both, before you give a comment, it's both necessary and appropriate, and the reason is, granted, you have revenue, you have revenue funding streams that are anticipated, obviously, but we know for certain that we are earmarking impact fees as revenue in order to balance the budget. That just makes sense.
Your budget is a target. You anticipate that you will hit that target with both revenues and expenses. When you pass the budget, you acknowledge that you've set what your targets are.
So, those are included by virtue of passage of the budget?
Yes. So, in reality, because you pass the budget, you make the allocation of the funds. It's not necessary to do those in separate motions, because when you pass the budget, you've in essence done that.
It is necessary, one, two, to have resolutions earmarking those Marcella Show impact fees.
Well, when you pass the budget, you've done that.
Okay.
We've earmarked it, but, you know, we're talking really about two different things here. We're talking about a passage of a budget, which is a spending plan. The, you know, when we actually get to making a resolution individually for any Act 13 money, that's, that's, that's a more of a legal resolution, obviously, because it will be voted on. But I feel that we should be doing that only and after a review from our county solicitors, that we are making those in an appropriate fashion.
Well, wait a minute. During the budget meetings, I said that the pension arc isn't within the guidelines of the impact fee, and it got put in the budget anyway. We've had meetings, we've had at least, I don't know, eight meetings in the last 20 days. Where was the need to get the, I mean, no one mentioned anything about getting the solicitor's opinion, even though I said it's not the intent of the legislation, and the majority said, no, go ahead and put it in. One would think that you would ask those questions before today, not after, because if that's not the case, then you're going to have 110,000 or whatever the amount is, 110, not funded, and you're not going to have a budget that was balanced.
Again, Mr. Lynch had indicated in those discussions that we were able to utilize the 110,000 under the ARC, under judicial services, because the costs that we're incurring are based on the courts, thus it falls under Item 10, judicial services. I think that, at this point, we should proceed, and I agree, Mr. Cup, with you, by passing the budget as itself, we are acknowledging the appropriations of the 13 budgets. I understand what you're saying there. By virtue of it being in there, and us, yea or nay, we are approving those appropriations of 13 money.
You know what that means to me? That means either that it will be a majority decision in January, or in January, if it's determined that one of those four items does not get passed, then we will not have a balanced budget. We will find that out in January, that the budget was not balanced on December, wherever it is, 18th. I'll make a motion to amend the budget, to amend the agenda to include making allocations for the Marcella Show impact fee of year 2012.
Well, there's, none of those resolutions were included in the, in the agenda.
That happens, you go back in several months, watch the film, read the minutes, and you'll see so many times where something has sprung at the beginning of a meeting. So, it can't, agenda can be amended. That's my motion.
Well, it can, it can be, but I strongly recommend that we don't do that, because we haven't had appropriate legal review.
It comes with a vote. I mean, I made a motion. If there's not a second, it fails, and we move on to the next item.
We've already got the advisement of council that we need not do it. Mr. Cup, I, you know the law better than I do, sir, so I will acknowledge your opinion.
You just have to call for a second. If there is none, we can move on.
Is there a second?
Of course not.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
You just move on.
Do you have a little clarity here? What exactly is the legal, what is, what is the legal decision here?
The question, the question, and all due respect to Mr. Lynch that you keep referring to and throwing under the bus here, Mr.-
Don't throw him under the bus.
Well, sure you are, because you're, you're make, Mr. Zapatowski, you're making the decision, not, not Mr. Lynch making the decision, you're the guy getting paid to vote, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, the question at hand is, is it appropriate to use Act 13 money for the purpose of propping up an underfunded pension? My position is, no, it's not, and that is the decision that we need, not a procedural decision about if you vote on this, that happens. That's really not the issue. The issue is, is it appropriate to spend Act 13 money for pension funding? That is the decision you need, and I'd like to copy that in writing, please.
Okay, let's move on. You'll get it, Al.
Thank you.
Under Item 4, Assessment Office.
I make a motion that we, if I may, since this is going to be the most talked about, that we advance the agenda and move to the budget.
No, I don't think we should. We'll get through these items fairly quickly.
No, I hope so.
We'll get through them quickly.
All right, that's fine.
Assessment Office, consider approval of the following for real estate tax exemption, as he has been deemed a 100% disabled veteran by the Veterans Administration of Pennsylvania effective for the 2013 tax year, Robert D. Rechner, Jr., of McCollum Town, PA.
Move.
All those in favor, motion carries. Consider approval of a two-year contract with Resource Technology Corporation, State College, PA. The contract terms are $1,000 per month. Listed in the 2013 budget request, the company provides mineral valuation and joint support services to the Assessment Office.
Move. Second.
All those in favor, motion carries. Under Behavioral Health Administration, consider approving the following agreements and modifications.
I will make a motion.
As listed on the agenda, second.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Item number seven, Controller, Financial Condition of the County Report.
Wait a minute.
Children.
Is that a missing one?
I'm surprised, Al.
No.
Children in CYS.
Oh, okay. Children and Youth Services, sorry. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2012/13 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Mark Mahalaf, Esquire of Union Town, PA, to represent the interest of the children in dependency proceedings, the rate for which service is $65 per hour.
Move.
All those in favor, motion carries. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2012/13 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through Fayette County Children and Youth Services and Avanco International Incorporated of Virginia for software upgrades at a cost of $6,048.
Move. Second.
All those in favor, motion carries. Consider approval of the lease of two vehicles through the statewide contract program at a total cost of $49,295 for 60 months, paid in 20 quarterly payments at an amount of
Move. Captain.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries.
Before we move on to item number seven, where is the agenda item for authorizing the advertisement for leasing, seeking proposals to lease a building for CYS?
It wasn't, it wasn't moved on to the agenda.
Yeah, well, or not.
It was.
It was unanimous. Because we did not, we did not, I mean, the most, we did not approve the lease, lease agreement request. We didn't approve the lease request. That did not advance to the agenda, but then I made a motion to seek advertising, to authorize advertising for CYS. We talked, we stood here and talked about the scope of work for her to check with other individuals.
It's not on there because I, yeah.
That's okay. We just need to put it on there.
Actually, the motion is to place on the agenda approval to seek RFP for rental space for CYS.
Okay, so it's, so the motion should say, um-
Okay, place on the agenda.
Approve. Allow the county to seek proposals-
RFP.
RFP, proposals to lease additional office space. Is that what, is that-
Actually, the way it was said, motion placed on the agenda, approval to seek RFP for rental space for CYS.
Make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, aye, motion carries. Now, showing the Church of Church, inform our finance condition of the county.
Commissioners, for your approval, on this 17th day of December 2012, in our general fund checking account balance at United Bank, we have $1,251,944.19. Funds that are owed to our general fund, which include temporary loans, amount to $1,440,000. ARC payments due, as listed on the agenda, amount to $89,983.50. Central service payments, as listed on the agenda, are $78,686. Funds that are general fund owes are ARC payment in the amount of $794,797.75. For the budget year 2012, our net position is $2,065,815.94. Our total 2012 revenues are $25,828,480.29. Our total 2012 expenditures are $23,101,470.10. Our total 2011 expenditures, which are being paid in 2012, are $2,030,829.3. In our capital reserve fund balance, there's $63,009.15. In our bond fund balance, we have $306,932.30.
I'm following the county.
Yes.
During our budget meetings, we were informed that monies that was needed for payroll for children and youth services, but also for adopted parents' checks.
Yes, foster parents.
Foster parents' checks.
Yes.
This cash balance is 1.2. Will that cover it now, or has that been rectified or not?
I will have to check into that further. As far as I know, that is a yes. CYS does owe us over 1.25 million at this point, so that kind of complicates the matter a little bit further.
Well, Janine, your, Janine, for public purposes, your deputy came in and said that, I'm trying to think of how much money was there, a couple hundred thousand. It was under 500,000, Jean Clark, do you recall? I think it was like 300?
It was 300.
It was 300.
250, yeah. I think to just meet, meet it was 250 up to 300,000.
That's my understanding.
And I said, well, what about the cash balance? Sam Lynch said that there was no, and Janine confirmed, no monies for that purposes. And we have to make a decision because we have payroll and foster.
Right.
I know discussion was, which I disagreed with, was to have the Marcel, the impact fees lend CYS at 300,000 with the stipulation that it would be promptly returned upon receipt of receiving those monies. But we, we need, you can check on that because I, I was told it was a matter of urgency, okay?
Good.
And the reason I'm bringing it up here is because of the checking account balance of 1.2, so, okay? Thank you.
I thought we had addressed that, so, yeah.
Hmm?
I thought we had addressed that. But not sure either.
Oh, I'll answer for you by the end of the minute.
Okay. Any other questions for Controller? Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Item number eight, courts. Consider renewal of the lease between Serbedash Brothers Ventures II of University Drive, Dunbar, and the County of Fayette for the Office Magistrate District, number 14-0102, for a term of 2013 to 2018 at an annual increase of 2 percent.
Make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Consider appointment of Magisterial District Judge Ron Haggett, Jr., Controller Sean Lally, and State Constable Claude Sains to the Constable Review Board, the State Constable Philip Vornell, as the alternate for the, for 2013.
Move.
Is that a second?
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under item nine, District Attorney, consider adoption of a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with the Fayette County Airport Authority for a one-year lease for the Drug Task Force at a cost of $1,850 per month.
There was a question regarding one of the provisions in the lease. I would like to, if possible, to approve this pending solicitor approval after that amendment to the lease is made and reviewed.
We were supposed to get something back from the solicitor for the airport authority. And to the best of my knowledge, we have not received a response. And if we do, we should be okay.
Which, which, which section for?
Oh, we won't, we didn't want them just coming in.
Just to enter into the 24-hour notice.
Yeah.
Entering into the lease.
Because there might be sensitive material and other things there that shouldn't just be looked at.
So, I would ask that we incorporate the language pending solicitor's approval to the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Now, all those in favor. Aye. Motion carries.
Nay.
I'd like to point out, this is, this is a building that will house the Drug Task Force as well as, with the grand jury as well.
Yes, sir.
And the reason I voted nay is because we should have solicited some proposals for this, just as we're doing for CYS and for everything, and other buildings that we need.
I think, if I may, that the selection of the building should be done by law enforcement based on their needs and what they, they feel is, is, is necessary for them to do their job.
Aye.
I'm not going to intervene or ask a proposal, though I would accept your, your suggestion.
I never said that it should not be at their selection. I said that we should seek solicits and bids. There's a lot of places in Fayette County.
Well, they, so that made a selection, so that's, that's their choice.
It made one selection, but it doesn't matter, pass.
Okay.
You're, just pass.
That's the one.
Thank you.
Item 10, emergency management 911. Consider ratification of the following annual service agreements for 911. Interact CAD G.I.A. software at a cost of $40,092.90.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Century Link for 911 telephone system for $30,904.60.
Move. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Fayette County Office of Human and Community Services, consider assigning the Director Laurie Grover Smith as authorized official in doc grants to assigned roles within doc grants.
Move. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving purchase of three Ford buses and one Freightliner bus from state contract number 4400008420. Total cost not to exceed $370,890. Second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving change order number three with Scheit and Bachman for $6,713 to program software to capture transfer passenger data.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Under the Human Resources Department, Human Resources, consider approving a modification to County Sick Pay, Towns Policy 7.4 regarding sick pay termination.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Under Information Technology, consider approving the hire of Michael Carr as part-time IT assistant at $9.50 per hour effective December 27, 2012.
Move. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approving the 150-hour volunteer internship of Laura Business Institute Information Technology Major Norman Walk effective January 16, 2013. Second. All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Under tax assessment, consider approving the promotion of tax assessor two Kendall Phillips to Assistant Director Clean and Green Assessor at non-union supervisory pay grade 10, step eight, at $31,824, effective January 2, 2013.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Under tax claim, consider approving the hire of Archery Stefan, Stefanini as a, an account clerk one at SEIU pay grade, step, pay grade three, step A, at $19,500, effective January 7, 2013. Second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Second.
Under Veterans Affairs, consider approving the temporary promotion of Perry Russell from PRPM to full-time band driver while the current full-time band driver is off work on a leave at SEIU pay grade three, step A, at $9.71 per hour, effective 12/18.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider approval of, this is under planning and zoning, consider approval of RZ 12-9 Rex O. and Heather Murphy, Dunbar Township, requesting an extension of an R2 high-density residential on property currently zoned A1 agricultural rural.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider approval of RZ 12-10 Suzanne M. Marsh and Craig A. Edmund, Spring Hill Township, requesting a change of zone from M1 light industrial to A1 agricultural rural.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider approval of amending the November resolution to remove CodeCISCo Consulting, Inc. in Pittsburgh from the UCC third-party inspector list as they have declined to renew the agreement.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider ratification of the following transfers as listed for total debits of $195,885.3 and total credits the same.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider approval of the November 21, 2012 regular commissioner meeting minutes.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider approving, approval of the 2013 agreement between Fayette County and Southwestern Pennsylvania Legal Services for CYS.
Move. Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider approving the, of extending the audit services for the years ending December 31, 2013, 14, and 15 with Zelen Skovski and Axelrod LLC for the financial and single audit and the June 30th fact audit at a cost of $77,340 for the financial and single audit and $12,240 for the June 30th fact audit for 2013, $78,890 for the financial and single audit and $12,485 for the June 30th fact audit for 2014 and $80,465 for the financial and single audit and $12,735 for the June 30th fact audit for 2015.
Move. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider extending the contract with interim county solicitor as needed.
Move.
Second. All those in favor.
What's, what's the purpose?
To complete the, the goals and objectives set forth in the original contract.
I, I would think.
Excuse me. What, has anything been started on that? Because I haven't seen anything.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, is at the first of the year that we sit down and have a discussion with the solicitor and court done and go over where we are regarding, regarding that and be able to judge from there.
There should be a time limit on here. As needed, if, if it could go on.
I mean, again, I think that we should have the meeting the first of the year, and then that's our benchmark to know where he stands and where he needs to go.
Well.
I mean, that's the only suggestion I'm making.
Yeah. I mean, even when we did the budget, had budget meetings, when I would bring up the, when I asked Sam Lynch about the county solicitor's budget, and he said that he put the monies in there through February, and he had, he adjusted February's month because of possible changes. So, but there was, of all the departments, that's the only one that never seemed to, you know, come for a discussion, other than what my question was to the consultant. I still think that it needs to have a date of circuit.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor.
Nay.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider approval of the 2013 trend note for $5 million from To Be Determined with the term, terms of To Be Determined. We have those, we have that information currently, I believe. Is that correct?
How many, how many financial institutions responded to the?
There were five proposals.
Five received.
Lowest?
Lowest was, excuse me, PNC Bank at 1.7%.
And, and for these purposes, it doesn't have to be necessarily the lowest, but also have to meet all of the requirements in the scope of work, so.
Have they met all the requirements and all the scope of the work?
I had solicitor cut the view.
And the answer is?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion that we award.
Can you hold on one second?
Sure.
This is PNC Bank out from Monroeville? And it's 1.27?
Which is pretty low.
At a fix straight.
Fix straight.
Yeah, the, the one that came in next is 1.29, then a 1.34, we had two, and then the highest is 1.75. Second. You did make the motion.
I didn't get to finish it.
Oh.
Sorry. I make the motion that we approve PNC Bank of Monroeville, PNC Bank of Monroeville to address the 2013 tax anticipation note for $5 million.
At a 1.27% fix straight.
That's correct.
Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Consider adoption of the 2013 general fund budget.
If I'm, I want to make one point before we go any further. We were discussing the $110,000. These are part of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lally, these are the employees' pension withholdings, correct?
It's the ARC payments, yes.
So, technically, it's a part of the employment of judicial services. Would you not agree with that?
I do agree with that.
And are we not funding in other aspects of Act 13, the hiring of personnel?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, if I may, I, I fall this under category 10, and, and I think it has merit, and it will be subject to audit, but if we're going to pay Penn State Ag for employment services, well, judicial services also have employment requirements. This is a part of the employment package, is it not?
It is.
So, I, I just want to make that point clear, that we're not just shifting money to the pension plan. This is a part of the judicial branch and their employees, no different than Penn State Ag or anything else. Employment is employment.
If I can add, it is very akin to payroll deductions that are standardly taken out of every employee, including ourselves as elected officials. We have our FICA, we have our, our unemployment compensation, and ARC is a cost of doing business. For every employee that the courthouse employs or that the county employs, a portion of their wages is contributed to the ARC for their future benefit. That's a simple.
I just want to make the point that it's, it's a part of the employment package, no different than our appropriation to hire or fund another hiring of another position at another agency.
Commissioner Lawley, I agree with you with the exception of the last statement that Commissioner Zabatowski made. You defined what ARC was, obviously, but, and I'm not going to argue any point with you because you're not the decision maker and you're not going to argue with, with me. That's not what.
And I'm not going to argue with anybody.
Or debate the issue because that's, it's not necessary between us at this time. The, the issue is whether or not those funds, the impact fees, can be earmarked for those purposes. The other thing is, just for clarification purposes, it is not Penn State Extension Office that is getting money. It's the conservation.
Conservation, I apologize.
And Act 13 is very specific. We found this out, I know it was in the paper, that Sam Lynch told, you know, made the suggestion. That, that was talked about at all of our public meetings. Doug Pietro, Conservation District Manager, came here many months ago, sat in that back row office, and during the impact fee meetings, made that suggestion. Plus, in October, we had a letter that he requested additional funding for, actually, it was $38,000 is the salary, right, Chief Clark? $38,000 plus, plus the benefits.
Plus the benefits.
And then there's extra in there for offsetting of office expenses. But the, the impact fee is very specific and says that it can be given to a conservation district for the purposes of Marcella Shell Education and so forth, and that's why I support it.
No, I'm just saying.
Paying of ARC, ARC funds are different. I understand that Sam Lynch, he's $160 an hour. I'm sure you're going to listen to his opinion on it. He says it falls under judicial services. It's going to be a matter of what we agree to. I don't think that it does.
No, I understand, Commissioner. I'm not trying to debate you. I just want to make sure, clarify that employment is employment, benefits, out of that money going to the conservation district, there's pension monies in that, that money allocated, right?
If you do read.
So, again, it's, it's, whether it's de minimis, only a few dollars in one person. So, again, it's, it's, whether it's de minimis, only a few dollars in one person, or the combination of, of the ARC for the judicial side of the courthouse, I mean, it's just how you, how you look at it.
Well, that includes, that, that $110,000 ARC payment, that also, that includes the court system, which is juvenile probation, adult probation, those types of offices. If you pull the Act and you read the definition under judicial services, it's for any impact that the Marcella Shell drilling has had on the court system, meaning additional cases, additional filings, things of that nature.
Well, I think we have.
Not a pension payment that actually was due back in the year 2011 and 2012 if they never paid. But again, it's going to be, you know, you'll get, we'll get a legal opinion on it and then we'll make a vote on it.
Okay, consider adoption of the 2013 general fund budget for total revenues of $29,258,917. Total expenditures of $29,258,917. The mileage rate will continue the same at 4.51448. The end of year fund balance is projected to be 2.2 million, 2.2 million, 207,540,000.
I'll make the motion to adopt the budget as, as read by the chairman.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries. Are there any public announcements?
Before public announcement, I was hoping that, you know, our budget meetings would result in a spending plan that would not only just control the expenses, but also would, it would place our general fund in a, in a more financial, healthier situation and position, but that's, that's not the case. You just heard from Commissioner Ambercini, he said a fund balance of 2.2, but yet there's, you also heard earlier today, earlier in the meeting, what our financial condition of the county was. Given that the 2012 one mil tax increase brought in 4.4 million, plus the 1.44 in impact fee, and then we just hear the two, close to $200,000 in the act of county bridges, our, our general fund should be in a much healthier financial situation. Granted, commissioners, whether it's this county or any of the other 66 counties, they're not going to agree on every line item, and that's a given, but she should agree on the overall spending plan. And in this particular, in go, you know, at the very beginning of the budget meetings, I was thinking, yeah, we're going to, we're going to make some cuts here, we're going to control some expenses, but we're also going to be able to, because of those additional revenues that I've just mentioned, have a healthier financial situation with no general fund. And we don't. There's no monies that has been set aside in our capital reserve, which is totally different from capital outlay, and there's no monies that are set aside for our operating budget. And one would think that after going through the year 2012 and then going into 2013, that we would be in a, in a better position, and the, and the reason we're not is because of the overall spending plan.
I sat in those meetings and, and if anybody, somebody correct me. Did you make any suggestion of any, any reductions?
Yes, I did, yes, I did.
Any reductions?
Yes, I did, plenty. They're all listed, ask Sam, he wrote them all down, ask him.
I mean, they were.
Chief Clerk was there, you, you were in and out, yes, I did, yes, yes, yes.
There were just things that you were opposed to?
Nope, nope, made, made the suggestions.
Yeah.
There's a whole list of them.
I never received any, any information on, on any of that.
We talked about it at the meeting, talked about it at the meeting. There is a, just, just to give the, the public some sense of information, some specifics, because reading off numbers really doesn't mean anything. 2.3, 25 million, 29 million, just, I'm going to give you a very brief, and it's not an exhaustive or an inclusive expenditure and revenue side, but I'll just throw out some information that I'm taking from the talk of my head, something that's new in the budget. We did, that was not done before, and this isn't whether I agree or disagree, I'm, I'm giving some general information. First off, there is a 3% increase for non-union. I did not take my 3% this year. In the commissioner's office, there is funding of a receptionist position that was not funded last year. I don't think we need a receptionist, we have staff that could handle that. That's $25,000 salary in addition, you have to add your health benefits on there. I don't have an administrative assistant, I choose not to, but I did put in $8,200 for part-time in the event that I decide to have one. In the planning and zoning office, there's a new position to be funded, and that's a grant writer, that's between 25 and 30,000 salary. You heard earlier today that the state and federal funding streams are, are limited. We'll have a grant writer if there's no grants to seek. We already have one grant writer, so I didn't think that was necessary. Drug Task Force, first time, and since I've been a commissioner, the general fund is giving the Drug Task Force $73,000.
And if I may, I think that.
Let me just go through real quick, this is at the top of my head, Commissioner Zabotowski.
Okay. Just wait to continue.
First time, normally for reclassifications for employees, monies are normally just set aside in a line item. In this particular instance, monies were set around 85 to 9, 8,500 to 9,000 dollars set aside in the controller's office for two positions for reclassifications. I'm trying to think. We did break the train.
I apologize. While you're collecting your thoughts, if I can at least comment on the Drug Task Force. I think it's imperative that we stepped up to, to offset the reduction that they've, they've seen from the state. I mean, in light of what is transpiring in our society, what more worthy investment that we have than, than preventing this type of, of, of crime?
Just for purposes of newspaper, make sure, I didn't, I, at the beginning, I didn't say, I'm.
Did you vote against, did you not support the Drug Task Force?
Yes.
Okay, well then, I'm just saying, I think it's a war of any kind.
Didn't I, didn't I say at the beginning of this that these are additional general fund items? I would not have given 73,000, I didn't have a problem in giving some money, but.
And also.
But listen to, listen to what I said at the very beginning. I wasn't saying, I was, I was and am only giving examples of what the general fund budget includes. I was not going through what I agreed and disagreed with at this particular time.
Well, if I may, you cited the front desk, which you disagreed with. Every item that you've cited, you were in disagreement with. You said.
No.
You said.
Task Force, I'm in agreement with.
At the meeting, you said no.
You voted no for the 73,000.
At the meeting, you voted no.
What, we didn't, what?
When we were, we were going over the appropriations, you said you didn't feel that we should fund the Drug Task Force.
We didn't vote on anything, that's the budget. I said, no, I don't think we should do 73,000, I think we should do less than 73,000. Yes.
How quickly our words change in public.
No, no.
How quickly they change.
No, I said, I don't think we should do 73,000, we should do less than 73,000.
Well, I'm glad that you changed your mind, since the last time we talked about it, when, when we were actually making the, the decision.
73,000 out of 29 million.
And that was at a public, a public meeting.
29, yeah, it wasn't a, it was a public meeting, look at the notes.
And second of all, 1.4 million of, of revenue is going to pay for the ARC. So always, always keep in mind that that's something that's, that's knocking at our door every year. So out of that budget of 29 million, 1.4 is going for the ARC. Second of all, as far as the, the receptionist goes, it's a mockery that somebody has to ring a bell, hopefully somebody hears it, and then somebody has to run out and, and it's been me on occasion and you on occasion that have gone out there.
Then the assistants can, can take turns.
And what, and what if they're on the phone and a constituent has to wait?
No, and, and the other thing too, to make it clear, because this is what's always written in the newspaper, because this is what was said, that it's a 1.4 million ARC payment. It leaves the impression with the, with the taxpayers that that's what the general fund is paying. Well, wait a minute, there is the other departments that are paying their proportionate share, so it's not a total of 1.4 million, okay?
It's 60% of the 1.4 million.
Okay, but it's not.
Providing those other departments pay.
If we're going to be clear, we're going to be clear. And then also, this is less this year than it was last year. Last year was 1.5.
And, and actually, CYS is pretty much a wash, we end up paying for it in the long run anyway, so we're eating the costs there. We've never been paid by the courts since we've implemented the program of this cost share for the, the ARC. Again, I'm not going to get into a debate with you, but I, I do disagree with some of the things that you brought up.
I just brought up a few.
I think our budget, I think our budget this year is, is progressive, it's solid, and if anybody had any draconian cuts they wanted to make, they could have brought them to the table, I didn't see anybody.
I did bring them to the table, yes, I was sitting there and Sam Lynch wrote them all down, Chief Clerk.
Commissioner Emmerlin, did you receive any information on any cuts?
What do you mean receive? We, it's a public meeting, I said it there at the, at the table, not to put you in the middle, but you have to answer. You were sitting there, did I not go through the cuts, Chief Clerk?
I believe there was a meeting after.
No, not a meeting after, no, no, no. This was the budget meeting, we were sitting there. You were there.
You and Sam Lynch were there, those two were not there, it was after they left.
Where, where did they go?
It was after the meeting ended.
It was not after the meeting has ended, you kept walking back and forth with your cup of coffee. You kept walking back and forth with your cup of coffee.
Let's, let's, we've already passed the budget, I mean, you've already had your.
Let's move on.
There was no, there was no ended budget meeting. How can it be ended if Sam Lynch, $160 an hour, and don't pay for that hour that he sat there?
Are there any?
As I said, to make it very clear, it's the overall spending plan. Given the, given the increase in our act of county bridges, 104 million in our Marcella Shell, the, the one mil increase that brought in 4.4 million, our general fund should be in a healthier position. And granted, we do not agree on every line item, but we should be in a healthier position, and we should have had some monies that were set back after a complete year and going into another year in the capital reserve and then operating reserve.
Well, let me, let me just elaborate on that just a bit. Our budget probably would be in the line, actually, let me start out by saying, our financial advisor, Sam Lynch, indicated to us that this is probably the most realistic budget that we've ever had in, in the county. But one of the, one of the, you know, we do have a lot of significant issues with, you know, a lot of underfunding or funding cuts from state and federal, as Commissioner Zabotowski already mentioned, especially CYS is particularly hit hard, and, and, but, but the mandated portion of that is not, did not go away. The other issue is, you know, we spent approximately, as, as Controller Lawley mentioned a little bit ago, we spent about $2 million of 2012 revenues to pay for 2011 shortfall. So, you know, that, and that, that fortunately has, has changed. One of the things, one of the other things is, in 2011, the ARC payment was underfunded, so that, that does cost more going forward. In fact, when we did vote to, to pay the actual calculated required ARC in 2012 of 1.5 million, Commissioner Zemmerling voted against it.
Right, we don't have to fully fund an ARC payment. A lot of counties.
Kicking a can down the street.
They think that's not doing it.
And, but she just, she just mentioned that the ARC payment this year.
Is lower.
Going forward is lower, and that's because we did fully fund it.
No, it isn't, it's, we, no, it's not, it's not.
Let, let me give you a specific example. In 2011, the ARC payment was underfunded by, I believe it's about $300,000. Now, that $300,000 is going to cost the county $40,000 a year for the next 15 years. Now, you do the arithmetic and you can see how wise that is. We have to take response, fiscal responsibility now. We cannot start, keep on kicking the can down the road for whatever reason. So, and that's what we're doing and it's making sense and it's working for us.
Would you not agree with that assessment, Mr. Valley?
I absolutely would. I mean, the math is correct. It was a $40,000 addition to the pension fund over the next 15 years, that's 600,000 on a $300,000 deficit.
And we've, we, we have probably one of the best actuaries, the most thorough, detailed actuaries in, Mr. Freeland, you're correct?
He's fabulous, a little dry, but he really knows the stuff.
Okay, is there any public comments? Yes, Mrs. Massey.
With regards to extending the contract for the interim county solicitor, we have attorneys in Fayette County. I don't understand why I have to bring somebody in outside the county. And you said when you brought him on board, that he would, in December, he'd be gone. Now you're asking to keep him on. I just want you to know, Al, that you cost me some money, because when you brought this solicitor in, I had a debate with somebody about whether he's going to be gone in December or not. And they emphatically said, Jerry, don't believe what Ambercini says, he's going to keep him on. He's going to be the final solicitor for the county. And I stood up for you and I said, if Al says he'll be gone in December, he will be gone in December. So we made a bet. Now I got to reach in my pocket and pay my bet. But that's okay, I, I can pay my bet. But I am very disappointed in, in.
Would you like her to respond, Mrs. Massey?
I don't know how you can respond. I don't know how you can. How can you, how can you, what can you say to? My brain's in park this morning, so, excuse me, the horns aren't coming.
That's fine.
But anyway, I don't know what you could say to justify keeping this man on. I really don't. If he hasn't been able to do the little job that he was hired to do, is revamp the solicitors' department, then he needs to go for lack of production on his part. And that's all I got to say. I, I am just so disgusted with this whole county commissioner board that I'm done.
Okay, well, let me, let me respond to that. You raised a good question. Now initially, we, we, we brought Mr. Berkeley, Attorney Berkeley, in to be impartial. You know, we have a number of things to do. We have to, we have to reorganize our solicitors' department. We have, in the picture, you know, we have a major, you know, one of the things that, that obviously, as I indicated, and don't make any secret of it, we have a, a large, you know, liability problem with, with frivolous lawsuits in this county. And, and so, you know, the, the effort to attack the litigation avoidance issues that we need to establish are very important. And if we keep this guy a few more months to accomplish the goals and objectives that we originally started out to, to attack, you know, I would much rather do that than, than, than just say, okay, Ken, you're done, and without, without accomplishing the goals and objectives that we set out. Keep in mind now, for every month we have Ken here, we're, the county's saving 1,000 bucks. Okay, so, so because he's not, we're not paying for any healthcare benefits for him. Now, the, the, and that, that, those are real dollars when it comes, comes to county. So we're not spending any more money by having him address these problems. Now I will admit that the lawsuit problem in this county is much greater than I had ever imagined. As, as I indicated before. As I indicated before, our, our liability, our liability premiums, our insurance premiums, went up just three years ago from 300,000 to 636,000 today. Now, you just saw the budget. Now that, that 636,000 is, is a significant portion of our 29 million dollar budget.
Yeah, but we're not, Fayette County is not facing lawsuits because of the solicitors. Fayette County is facing lawsuits because the people working for the county are not doing things properly. That's the kind of lawsuits we're facing.
Those premiums did not jump from 300 to 600,000 in a year or so.
I said three years. I said three years.
Secondly, it's the premium also includes the, it's not just the premium. It's also the costs and the, the awards, okay?
Right.
Also, it's not just what you read in the paper, those lawsuits. Do you know how many lawsuits we have under that 600,000 premium that he's talking about? Fact, slip and fall, automobile, prison, there, there's so many. You would, you would be surprised. But what you always hear is, oh, it jumped from here to here. And it's always certain, a certain lawsuit or two, okay? But let's talk about all the lawsuits that perhaps I was not named and other commissioners were named. You never hear about those lawsuits, okay? So you have to put that into perspective. The second thing is, as far as the Solicitor Berkeley is concerned, he's paid $4,000 a month. He's been here since June. That's what, $24,000, okay? In the budget that was just passed, the Salary Department had, now, did I, did we not just say 24,000?
More.
Okay, 24,000. July through December, 4,000 a month. This budget here, I'm looking at the, it's third, for the Solicitor Department head, the salary that was just passed, what is it, Amy, $39,000? $39,000. This was for the full year, for, that was passed for the 2013 budget. And for the Salary Assistant, it says 54,524. So think about it. I mean, is that two assistants? No. Would that be Cup and Hyde? Surely they don't make only 25,000 dollars apiece, okay? Follow what I'm saying?
All right.
So think about it. $39,000 for, for the head, for the head Solicitor for the 2013 budget and 54,500 for Salary Assistant. I would, I would think that two, if you go with the same scenario as last year, if we had two assistants, they're not going to make any 25,000 dollars apiece. So some decisions had to have been, had to have been made, especially, I mean, I asked, I asked questions and I was told, you know, no decision's been made. You know, let's move on to the next item in the budget meeting.
Well, we have, we have attorneys in Fayette County that are competent. And as far as I'm concerned, Fayette County people should be hired before outside of the county.
Well, and the only other thing, Mrs. Mazza, that I'll say about the interim Solicitor. I would say 80% of the time, when there are communications between the Chief Solicitor, which is Berkeley, and John Cup, you're coughing on it, usually it's after the fact, after decisions have been made. Most of the things that, all of the things that I am privy to is his response when our Pittsburgh law firm with these litigation suits send us information and provides us with an update. He writes, I agree, okay? Also, just for, there's a lot of discussions between, when we have one legal issue, we have two, two county solicitors talking about it in an email, which I really think is a big lose, okay? And one thing that really upset me, that I just found out about, is a, is an email between the solicitors that said, here's a county-related problem. Should we only involve Commissioner Amber Sini as the first line of communication? And then a meeting occurred with, with only that commissioner and a decision was made. And an attorney was in the room as well as another elected official, present company here excluded, okay? And that should have never occurred. So, so, I mean, there's some, there should never be an email that says first line of communication with one, with one commissioner. Never, never.
I thought we had a board of three commissioners.
I thought we did.
We do.
But it don't seem like it.
And I'll follow up on that issue, because that's a very important issue.
Commissioners, if I may, Angela had asked me a question during the meeting about foster parents and their pay. Those checks were cut on Friday and the money was being loaned out of the Act 13 to be repaid as prudently as possible.
Okay. Now, wait a minute. So how did that, and don't anyone in this room or afterwards say Angela wasn't there? Because go check the security cameras in the courthouse. I've been there.
I don't know what you're talking about.
No, who gave the approval to pay out of Act 13 monies, a loan, a loan? Did anyone sign off on it? Who?
It says two of the three commissioners.
I signed off on the approval for the funding.
Well, where was I?
I don't know if it said Act 13 transfer on it.
No, it was a requisition for payment.
It was just a requisition.
From where? Where's the money's coming from?
The monies are going to come from the Act 13.
It was just a requisition form that we signed though.
To make payments.
Authorizing that the monies be paid from Act 13?
Yes, and to be paid back.
Setting a bad precedent.
It was just, it was just a requisition form though.
Well, a requisition is authorizing payment.
But it didn't specifically state Act 13 money.
Did it say Act 13?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, why would anyone sign and say we're going to, well, where did the money come from?
It's a payment.
It is a payment towards that payable.
A payment from where?
From the Act 13 money. That's where it came from.
Okay, well, then if it came from, you're hearing it from the controller. He knows, he just read his, whatever that's called over here. I thought I.
It's on my phone.
Okay. And so, and where was I? You said two of the three commissioners? Now, watch it say, oh, where, where was I? Go check the security cameras. Ask, ask assistants. I've been in that courthouse every day this week.
Well, the, the P O's in the box, though. I mean, they're always in the box, so.
Well, first, first.
Can I borrow some of Act 13 money?
And that's another thing. I thought, I thought we weren't going to, okay, I'm not.
The P O did not indicate.
Actually, the fact of the matter is that was discussed in the conference room with Sam Lynch, all three commissioners. Janine came over and talked to us all about it and, and.
And one suggestion was a look, a temporary loan. And I said, no. Yeah, I said, no, we need to talk about it. Can it even be used for that? And then up everybody goes.
No, actually, Angela, you said earlier in the meeting that you approved or that you suggested doing that.
I did, I would never suggest that, no. No, 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 no.
Nobody's going to be able to recant what was said or wasn't said.
Sam Lynch takes notes. He takes very good notes, especially whenever I say things that you just go ahead and pull it. I said, that's not, granted, we, I actually said, where would the money come from? Commissioner Amber Sini said it can't come from the cash balance. I looked at Sam Lynch. He said, there is no cash flow. And I said, and then I would, and then, you know what comment came out of my mouth? I said, one, one mil increase, 4 mil, 4.4 million dollars, and we have no money? That's what I said.
No.
Yeah, well, that's what you said.
And I said, no, it shouldn't be used for that. We should look for other purposes, not a loan from Act 13 monies.
Do we have the funds available? No, at this time.
No.
Well, I think you addressed that issue very clearly. When $2 million are being paid out of last year's bills in this current, this current term, that's half of the millage increase. 1.4 million dollar ARC, you've almost eaten the whole thing. If there isn't cash available, that's because of one reason. This is not the time of year the government collects revenues.
This is a constant problem that we have annually with all departments at the end of the year. We are always cash strapped. And of course, we have to prioritize what, what we will spend or authorize payment for. Is that correct, Mr. Lally?
It is, I mean.
Don't we usually anticipate when we get, that's why we move so quickly on the TAN, is to recover at the beginning of the fiscal year?
The TAN, no.
For the coming year.
And that is why, and that is why with increased revenue from, from the millage increase, monies need to be set aside in an operating reserve. County code suggests an operating reserve account, just like a capital reserve. And the county, our spending plan is not setting monies aside. Who are these end of the year purposes?
Commissioners, Zimmerman, I fully agree with you that we need to have a reserve fund. But when you were operating at a deficit going into the next fiscal year, how does that happen? How do you propose that happen?
One mil increase, 4.4 million dollars. Better spending plan, better spending.
1.4, you know, how much eat out of the ARC did that right off the bat?
Okay, all right.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Marcy Azarovsky and this is Karen Blocker. And we're employees of Highlands Hospital. And we're here to ask the Commissioners why we have not received a response to our attorney's many requests for a meeting with all of you to discuss the awarding of the value behavioral contract to another county hospital. Letters were sent to you and to your counsel requesting such meetings. The hospital gave a series of dates, October 25th, 29th, October 30th, October 31st, November 1st, November 2nd, November 5th, and 6th, all available dates for a meeting. There was also a letter sent on December 7th asking if you were willing to meet. And we're here to tell you that the employees have had their hours cut, they're losing their health insurance coverage because of this, and because our value, our behavioral health admissions have been drastically impacted by the awarding of that contract. The overall effect on the continued lack of admissions will be devastating to our facility and our community. To date, the hospital has received no response, nor to my knowledge, your knowledge, has any attempt been made to resolve this situation. The only commissioner who agreed to meet with Highlands Hospital officials was Commissioners Zimmerman. Although Commissioner Amber Sini, you were quoted in the Herald that you were willing to consider such a meeting. We would like to know what we can expect to hear that a meeting has been scheduled and hope that you sincerely realize that we cannot afford to have layoffs to make you understand how serious the situation is to our hospital.
Marcy, there has been some exchange between the attorneys. And I think that therein lies the dilemma, is getting the specifics. Because you have two attorneys who are going back and forth as to the logistics of the meeting. I have no problems meeting with Highlands.
We're here to broker. Let's set down some dates, Ben.
And as you, as you well, as you, as you well know, as you well know, I have responded to every request that Highlands has made.
For a specific, a specific meeting?
You could have it tomorrow morning, I'd be there.
Okay. How about you guys? I guarantee you I can get Michelle Cunningham there.
But the fact remains is, you know, the, the matter, we have to discuss it with the attorney since there is an engagement between the two different attorneys.
Why can't you tell your attorney you're willing to do this? I mean, this has been going on for months.
Your attorney has guidelines. He's been going back and forth with Mr. Berkeley on this until we get some.
Pardon? There's been no response.
I saw the emails.
Yeah.
Ken Berkeley, that's that. And Attorney Rulo asked, do we still not have an answer? He says, no. That's it. No response from any Commissioners to meet with Highlands. That's all we're asking. What is the holdup?
Seriously, Ms.?
Why will nobody, you have two attorneys. Pick one you want to deal with and get this meeting set up.
I assure you that I've been willing to meet all along.
Well, somebody emailed your attorney and tell him.
As you know, I've been.
Absolutely. You and I spoke in the hospital lobby. You said you would do whatever you could to help us. This is what we need done. We need you guys to intervene.
Keep in mind, Marcy, just to point this out, you know, there was, there was actually two meetings set up. And on both occasions, the Attorney Rulo, who was Highlands Hospital attorney, and Michelle, you know, fell to a tent.
No, that meeting was canceled. And I have.
Yes, it was.
Absolutely. They canceled. We had this discussion before.
It was reinstated and we actually had the meeting.
There?
So.
No, that was not. I mean, again, I'm not going to have that conversation, because we had that conversation in Conneville City Council. What we want to do is let's wipe all that comb. This is done. Let's start now. Let's get a meeting. Let's get this done.
Okay, well.
That's fine. Now, what we'll do is, we've already taken steps to set up the parameters for that meeting. And I suggest we have it right here in this room because of.
And we said, just come to Highlands. And here's the whole reason. It's because if you need information about us, it's right there. We can pull it out for you. If you want our statistics, instead of going back and forth, you, you're the one who's talking about cutting out the middleman. Let's get this job done. There's the place to do it. There's the place to show Conneville that you're our commissioner and come to our hospital and fix this.
Marcy? The whole hangup right now is that Ms. Cunningham doesn't want selected people to attend that meeting.
And all we're saying is all three commissioners, your attorney and the hospital's attorney and the hospital's officials, that's all we ask.
I think that everybody that was mentioned in her July 13th meeting should be, it would be common courtesy for them to be invited so they can ask questions. I mean, you know, this.
Come see us first and then we'll do that.
We want to be careful.
Then we'll talk about that. I mean, I know what you want. But hey, we know what you want.
I think it's beyond that. We, we attempted that months ago and that.
You thought it counted to meet just with Highlands Hospital officials and our attorney. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I can't get Highlands Hospital officials to respond to me. I've sent emails to your CEO. Have I gotten a response back yet?
Well, Ken Berkeley. Ken Berkeley said for us. I bought a lot of, threw an email over that because I picked up the phone.
How many emails have I, I'm not talking about Ken Berkeley. I'm talking about I've sent several emails to the CEO, have not gotten a response. And I was told by Ms. Blocker that the reason she's not allowed to respond is her board would not.
She is an attorney and I.
Okay, okay, so, okay, how many, what are we going to do?
Here's the, here's the, they said with that. First off, the meeting that was scheduled, it was canceled because of all of this executive session, public meeting, and, and you are accurate. You're correct. Because I picked up the phone and said to, called Attorney Rulo's office, because I went upstairs. Commissioner Zabatowski, I saw him in the hallway. He, he went up looking for everyone, came back down as well. And I called Attorney Rulo's office and said, after I said to Ken Berkeley and the individuals in the room, are we waiting for Attorney Rulo or anyone from Highlands? And they said, doesn't look like they're coming. I go down and read an email that did say it was canceled. So I picked up the phone and Attorney Rulo, they had to find him because he was on route and connected me. He said it was his understanding that it was canceled, okay? So those, all those dates that you listed, I sent back saying that to Berkeley's office, I'm available, pick any of those dates, okay? And then the, just recently, I think it was either Thursday or Friday.
Probably the seventh date.
Right. Attorney Rulo sent a email to Berkeley and said, please see enclosed email. Rulo was asking why we haven't met. And Ken Berkeley wrote FYI, please advise to us free. I emailed back saying, pick a date, I will be made available as long, and I'm paraphrasing, as long as it's not obviously a Commissioner meeting date and there's nothing else scheduled. Commissioner Amber Sini wrote back and said that he would do it under, under certain parameters and conditions. One being, as he just said, that all those people who were accused in, and that's the word he used, in the July 13th letter was.
I said, mentioned.
Mentioned, you, you had the word accused in.
In my email, I did.
Yes, as well as Union Town Hospital. And there were two, to have it here, and then there was another one.
And you must know, it's not about Union Town Hospital. It's about Highlands Hospital.
Yeah, this isn't about, this isn't about all of that.
No, it's not.
And, and I don't know, I did, I don't know what Commissioner Zabatowski said. But again, I'm available and I will meet. I don't, I mean, going back and forth with attorneys and parameters.
I mean, this has been going on since May. Come on.
Since July, since July.
July 13th. July 13th.
Well, actually, we heard about the contract being awarded before that.
But you guys contacted me on July 14th or 15th.
I stand corrected.
I remember the conversation that I had with Ms. Blocker when we contacted to find out, to find out if the contract was signed.
Absolutely. And Commissioners Zabatowski, I mean, you, we were just discussing here about how the drug task force is a worthy cause. I mean, if, what has happened recently in Newtown doesn't say how worthy mental health is in this community. And our Commissioners can't even get together and simply meet with our facility?
I will meet, and there are no parameters as far as having to have, you know, those people mentioned in the latter present or Union Town. Highlands is asking for it.
Absolutely. That's what we're asking.
There's no problem with it.
And at no time do we know if Union Town wanted to be involved in any of this contract.
I've not had any communication with them at all, so no.
But does this not stem? You say it's not about, it's about Highlands, not Union Town.
It's about the impact of the awarding of that contract.
But does it not stem from the contract that was awarded to you?
We want to know why that contract was awarded.
And I, you know, the answer was-
And only the Commissioners can answer that question.
The answer was provided-
That's actually incorrect.
We had this conversation too.
The only person that can answer that is Value Behavioral Health, since they're, since they're the ones that select the services, the hospital services for inpatient behavioral health. That's a state contract. It's not a county contract.
You approved this contract, and in fact, in fact-
We do not approve this contract.
Oh, really? That is not what the former attorney for DPW said in an article that was in the newspaper. That would be John Kane, who actually said that the county's Behavioral Health Administration does oversee the day-to-day operations of the program, and the county is legally responsible for approving all contracts that involve the expenditure of public funds under state regulations.
And I'll, and to add to that, when the letter, and what I'm, I'm not taking sides until we all sit down and get the information, okay? But, since we're talking about Behavioral Health, DEP Attorney, what's his name, Tavis? Lawrence Tavis? Okay? He was very supportive, you know, with the results of his legal opinion was. That was all discussed openly, publicly, everything. Attorney Kane's letter came in, who's the former DPW, and what did it say all across whenever I go out? Confidential, client privilege, confidential information. Wait a minute, that letter was favorable to Highlands. How, why is it that that is the, you know, and I, and Ken Berkeley sends an email, I caution every Commissioner not to discuss because of potential litigation. Wait a minute, Tavis's letter was freely discussed, that it was favorable to Highlands, to Union Town, but Kane's letter, there's like not one peep.
But the point of it is, is that's what it's-
The point is, is that we need voting, and we need to sit down and, and they're contradictory legal opinions. And they both worked for DPW. So we need to have a discussion about that.
And that's exactly why we need to have all parties and, in a public meeting.
We need you to agree not to all parties. We need you to agree as the Commissioners with your council and Highlands Hospital and their council to have a meeting.
I will do that.
End of sentence.
I will do that.
End of sentence.
Marcy, you just got finished saying we should have it at Highlands Hospital, but because all the information is there. Well, if we don't have all the parties, that's incorrect.
You can take the information that we brought to you, because this was our, Highlands Hospital's concern, that we are taking to you, and you can take it back to your other parties and have them discuss it with you.
Marcy.
We're asking simply that you have this one, honestly, is it really that hard to? The mystery of proceeding. Is it really that complicated?
No, it's not that complicated.
A simple meeting, just, that's all we're asking.
But when you start excluding parties from this conversation, you're not going to come up with all the facts.
Sort of like-
Simple as that, you know?
Sort of like when they exclude me from those conversations.
Have a leading with Highlands, have a leading with Union Town if you want them to include- And if you need to get together, both parties-
And then both parties get together.
Bring them together. That's what we're asking. Come, this simple, simple meeting. Come to Highlands. Come to Highlands.
You know, the problem is that Ms. Cunningham made accusations across the board to a lot of different parties. Now, if you exclude half of those parties, what do you think the stance is going to end up with? I mean, we're already playing, you know, sending correspondence back and forth between Mr. Tavis and the consultant that was a former employee of DPW.
So, former employee of DPW?
Yeah, former employee, but he's currently a consultant on his own. So-
He's a counsel. He's an attorney. Right.
Yeah, but he also has a consultant-
I mean, I would hope that your feelings regarding this Cunningham wouldn't sway you from coming to talk with us. Put it behind you. Come to Highlands Hospital. That's all we're asking.
No.
Thank you.
Now, here, here-
Your council.
I've been there many times.
Let me point out, let me point something out that seems to be missed in the rush here. I initiated the dialogue with Highlands Hospital back in March or April of this year. In fact, Michelle came to my office, and we sat down and I suggested how we could help Highlands Hospital. She left that day with no commitment. And then this July 13th letter shows up that makes a lot of false accusations. So I think it's important, it's vitally important, that in a, in a public setting, so there's no, so everybody can clearly see what's going on, that each of those accusations are addressed fully and settled.
Well, I don't think we should-
And we can't do that with only half the people in the room.
Well, some other gentleman said, don't call it a meeting. Call it a work session.
It doesn't matter what you call it.
Well, you know, Mr. Rulo-
It doesn't matter who attends and what's the purpose and things.
Right. Exactly.
You know, what's interesting about this whole deal is, we went through a month-long emails back and forth with Mr. Rulo, and he wanted to have a public meeting. Now all of a sudden, he doesn't want to have one. So what's the story then?
Well, it says we can't get one.
We certainly can get one. That's, I'm insisting that we have it.
Why won't you come to Highlands? That's a simple question. Why won't you come to Highlands without everybody else? Just from your own voters, we vote in that city for the Commissioners. We're the employees of that hospital. The employees are asking the Commissioners to come to Highlands Hospital. That's all we're asking. And have a date here, like not six months down the line. Let's get a date. Let's get this rigmarole on.
Marcy, I'll make this, I'll make this statement here. I will come to any place and talk to anybody at any time, but we must have this public meeting to actually get the facts out in front of everybody. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go in debate, I mean, I'll come to Highlands Hospital, I'll talk to the union, I'll talk to administration, I'll talk to anybody. But I must insist that we have a public meeting with all the parties involved to make sure that facts are clear and settled.
You keep saying all the parties involved. I don't want you to make any mistake that Highlands Hospital does not want Union Town Hospital involved. This is, this is Highlands Hospital's issue, not Union Town Hospital's issue.
But you're, but you're telling them, you're telling, you're saying that Union Town is the problem here.
Now, I said the awarding of that contract-
A contract by value behavioral health is the problem. A contract that the Commissioners have to approve.
Well, uh-uh.
That's what I said. Don't make any mistake that I'm saying it's Union Town's problem. I'm saying it's the Commissioners who approved value behavioral's contract to Union Town.
Marcy, since DPW mandates that Value Behavioral Health sets up the provider network, not the county, VPW, VBW through, as mandated by the Pennsylvania Department of Public Welfare. Why are, why is Ms. Cunningham even asking the Commissioners? We don't, we don't set up those practices. Why didn't she, why didn't she just go and ask Value Beha-
DPW already said exactly that you guys are the ones who handle the contract. This is not some judge who's known off the street. This is a former employee who's an attorney for DPW.
Again, we have not, we've received, and all due respect, we've never, in my four years, five years, passed a contract of this nature. We've never approved one. I too thought the same thing that you thought. And then I was informed that that was contrary, that in fact, we don't, because when you look at the litany of acute care facilities that are licensed to provide psychiatric services, there's fifteen or sixteen, is there not? There's Mon Valley, if I may. There's Mon Valley, there's Green County, there's Westmoreland, there's Frick, you know, there're every, there's multitudes of acute care facilities that are licensed to provide psychiatric services. We've never approved any of those contracts, to my knowledge.
I can only say that a former Commissioner told me that they did. I'm not speaking of, I'm speaking of Commissioner or the citizens.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I mean, and I thought the same thing. I was of the impression that we did.
But see, we all talked to each other and we all sat down and had a long conversation about this. We get all very close.
If that's the case, then we would preclude the other acute care facilities from providing any service and just run with all of Highlands. But we can't do that.
That's all we need.
Because that is, first of all, a patient has a right of choice, do they not?
Correct.
You cannot mandate that a patient go to a designated hospital. Last time I looked, that's called socialism. Patients have rights, whether they are on Highmark Blue Cross or they're on, they're receiving DPW. They have the right to decide. Their family members have the right to decide. So once Union Town got its license, there's only two types of license. There's an adolescent psych license and a psych license. There's no tweener, there's no in-between there. Once they got the license, as you guys know, we've talked about this, they became eligible to apply. Our administrator of our behavioral health has stated she approved or authorized the issuance of, or the, for value to sign off on them. But they met the guidelines. I don't know what else would-
And that's a complete other issue that needs to be discussed.
Well, we all know this. We've had months to churn this, we've churned this into butter, cottage cheese, whatever you want to call it. The fact of the matter is, is there are rights here that people have. I want to help Highlands as much as anybody. But the fact remains is, we have restrictions. I'm surprised, and I'm shocked and dismayed that the DPW, if there was a break of DPW rules, how come they haven't sanctioned the county at this time?
Maybe.
I mean-
Well, I'm saying, maybe.
I mean, that-
So don't you think it would behoove us all to meet? It's already used for litigation.
Trust me, I've talked about this to nauseam.
Well, yeah, ad nauseam is correct. We all need to get together.
That's exactly right. We all do need to get together.
Let's be specific. Let's be specific, Commissioner Amberstein. Highlands Hospital and the Commissioners and both of your councils. That's it. Come on.
Why don't you think it's fair to invite the other-
He's not asking for it. We aren't. We're asking for it. Union Town's not. That's all we want.
Do we have, is your CEO going to attend?
Absolutely. You know, you know we'll make it happen. You know I will. You know I will.
And she's asked, they've asked. The attorneys have been back and forth with dates. Like I said, nobody will give a-
Take a date. Give me three, we'll take them back right now and make it one.
Maybe if they wasn't going back and forth, he could be working on this litigation for fostering, and we wouldn't have to be, or they wouldn't have to be extending this contract.
We're ready. We're ready. Give us three dates, we'll get it together. Thank you. We appreciate you.
We won't, we won't get it.
That's why we're all, thank you so much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all you guys.
And again, in your hearts, I ask that you do keep in mind the families of Newtown and the community as a whole. There's no question that, as Marcy said, that mental health is, it plays a role, as well as other factors that came into play in that tragedy that occurred. Let us all hold our kids, our grandchildren, a little tighter this holiday season, and keep our prayers on those folks in Connecticut, because I can't imagine what they could possibly be going through right now.
Thank you, Vince. Are there any other public comments? Yes, Mr. Massey?
A couple of things that I'd like to discuss with you. You had, you had an attorney that you hired here for $4,000 a month. And originally, he was to be a consultant. Then when you actually hired him, you made him chief solicitor. Yet for five months, he sat in that chair there, he sat in the chair, and he was muted. Every legal question that was asked was addressed to Mr. Cupp. Now, the man was making more money than any chief solicitor we ever had. And the only time I ever did open his mouth was at the last meeting. Okay? And now you want to keep him as what?
I want to keep him, I want him to finish the job which has escalated.
Well, I thought, I thought the idea was that six months, he was going to do that. He was going to complete that job.
Well, as I was-
And like I said, you made him chief solicitor, and he never opened his mouth at these meetings. He never answered a legal question. Mr. Cupp answered all the legal questions. So I wondered why we need him? And why we-
Well, I'm not going to read-
How's he going to be, how's he going to be paid?
We need him because of the original contract and the goals and objectives that we originally laid out, with litigation avoidance, you know, with the education process, we need to develop, to keep these processes from continuing and from, and from the frivolous lawsuits that this county is exposed to, from continuing.
But I'd like to know what as needed means.
Until those goals and objectives are completed.
Six years.
But how, how are you going to pay him? How is he going to be paid? Is he still going to continue to collect $4,000 a month?
Yes, he is.
He's going to collect $4,000 a month and only be used as needed?
No, 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 no.
Well, actually, the agreement says until, I think it has an ending date, so that agreement needs to be modified.
I thought the ending date was today.
Huh?
I thought the ending date was today.
I believe, and I don't have it with me, but I believe that the contract says through the, says up to six months, four to six months.
Well, that'd be June through December.
Right. Right.
So December would be the last month that we-
Well, we voted today to continue the interim solicitor until we, until we establish the goals and objectives.
Now, but my question is, are you going to continue, you're going to continue to keep him on? Does that mean in January, he's going to get $4,000?
There needs to be an agreement, because the agreement says for the term to be four to six months. And that agreement was stated here-
Well, again, I understand that, Miss Emmerling. What I'm trying to figure out is, is that agreement going to be extended? Because according to the, what was passed today was, it says as needed. And I'd like to know, I'd like an explanation of what as needed means.
Well, let's see, I'd like to sit down, if I may. I'd like to sit down and discuss with the solicitor in question where he is at regarding the goals and objectives that he was brought on to attain, and let that be the bar as to where we're going with this. And I think that, I think all of us need to know that. So I would like to sit down with him and discuss those matters.
Is he still going to be chief solicitor?
Interim? Yes, that's correct.
He's going to be chief solicitor?
That is correct.
Then why isn't he sitting in that chair?
Well, it all depends, because, well, here's, come, come January, he wouldn't be able to be paid anyway, because there's not a contract signed, and as Controller Lawley and everyone has always stated, that you can't pay unless you have a signed contract. The contract expires December 31st.
You are better than such.
So-
I'm sorry.
That's okay, Annie.
I'm so sorry.
The, the contract says through December, so-
Yeah, I understand that, but what was passed today was, says as needed. What I wanted to know is, is that salary going to continue now? I mean, they passed a contract that says as needed. All right, who determines as needed, and how much is he going to get? That's what I want to know.
Well, we're extending the contract as needed. As needed refers to the time period of the contract. As I stated, we are going to complete the goals and objectives of that contract, and then, then, and then it will be completed.
So, actually, what you're going to have here is, you're going to have a chief solicitor collecting $4,000 a month, and you're going to have an assistant solicitor doing the chief solicitor's job.
No.
And getting paid, well, certainly he is. The chief solicitor, since I've been going to these meetings for seventeen years, and seventeen years, the only time the chief solicitor wasn't here to answer legal questions was when he was sick or something, something came up that he couldn't possibly be here, and one of the assistant solicitors was here. And in the, in the six months that this man that you've had here, and I have no animosity towards him, I don't know him. And I don't know what he knows or what he doesn't know. But I know this, that a chief solicitor is supposed to sit in at the commissioners' meetings and answer legal questions that come up. And the only person I have heard in the last six months answer any legal questions is Mr. Cupp. The other, the man you were paying $4,000 a month said absolutely nothing, and the first time he spoke was at the last meeting. And he consulted with Mr. Cupp. But that, and, so I, I'm saying that you're paying $4,000 extra for an attorney that I don't understand what he's doing, and you're going to extend his contract. And what I want to know is, does that contract mean he's going to get $4,000 a month from here on in?
Would we have to extend the contract?
Yeah, but I'm saying is, is that what you're going to do? I'm asking, is that what you're going to do?
That's what the resolution, that's what it says, extend the contract, meaning extending means under the, it has to be under the same terms and conditions, the money. That's, they passed it.
Yeah, and I, we got to know what he's spending, we got to know what he's done with the projects and where we're at with this.
And in six months, you don't know what he's done?
I have not received an update. I want to sit down with Mr. Berkeley and go over where he feels we need to go regarding litigation avoidance, the whole nine yards.
For $4,000 a month, I think that should have been done before today.
He could drag that out for-
Well, I assure you, that will not be the case.
The, the chief solicitor before was making, I think, $33,000 if I'm correct.
Plus benefits.
That's okay.
The chief solicitor was making $60,000.
Forty, it was $38,000.
No, it was forty-four plus benefits, which would have been about $60,000.
Yes.
The chief solicitor was making that much?
Yes.
I'd have to check the, I'd have to check.
He was, Mr. Ferens was up there, plus the, plus the benefits package.
Well, I understand that, the benefits. Anyhow, so you're going to pay this guy $4,000 a month for what? I mean, he's, he's not doing the chief solic, he's called the chief solicitor. He's a chief solicitor, and he should be doing the chief solicitor's job.
Here, this is from Sam Lynch, okay, we all know who he is. The audited numbers, salary department head audited for 2010 was $35,355. Audited for 2011 was $37,214. It has here, the adopted amended budget was $38,000.
Thirty-eight, plus the benefits.
I'm just talking salaries. That's what I'm reading the line across, $38,000.
All right, that's $10,000 less than, than what this gentleman was getting, as far as salary. He's getting $4,000 a month, that's $48,000.
I think you're saying overall cost, or you're not?
Overall, overall cost for $460,000, Mr. Mazza. I, I'm not making this stuff up, it's-
He's adding fight, he's adding unemployment, he's adding everything.
It's what the county's paying out.
You mean you're paying $32,000 for health and?
No.
Or healthcare.
Well, that's what you're telling me, $38,000 plus 32 makes $60,000 when I went to school.
No, that would be twenty-two, twenty-two thousand.
Seventy thousand.
Yeah, twenty-two thousand, thirty-eight, twenty-two.
Seventy thousand. No, he said $60,000. That's $22,000. Twenty-two thousand dollars, so you're paying for, that's a lot of money.
Is, are there any other comments?
For health insurance.
Are there any other public comments?
Yeah, I'm not finished.
No, continue then.
I'm not finished yet, there's one other thing I was going to, was Mrs. Emmerling ever reimbursed for her trip to the, to the-
Now, you know, that's a good, that's a good segue into what I'd like to mention here.
Now, just answer my question, please.
No, she hasn't been.
Have you been reimbursed?
And let me, no, I haven't.
You haven't been reimbursed either?
I have not. I've been too busy to, to put my expense statement in the timely manner. Now, let me explain what exactly happened, because I'm sure that, that everything wasn't explained in detail.
Nothing was explained to me. What was explained here was, was what happened at the last meeting.
Exactly.
That's the only thing I know about, what you, what you, what was said at the last meeting.
Let me explain. Okay. During the, you know, there was a CCAP conference in August.
Yeah, I know that.
Both, both Commissioners Emmerling and myself applied, registered, and went. We both went on, on Sunday, and the, you know, Commissioner Emmerling attended a committee meeting, I believe from three to five o'clock on Sunday afternoon. And then she, then the-
Yeah, you didn't have to agree, I should, I remember everything that you said at the last meeting.
Well, you didn't hear what I have to say.
I did.
On Monday, the conference actually starts. I went to the conference, I participated in not only the conference, the breakout sessions, the, the business meeting that CCAP does on Tuesday. On Wednesday, on Wednesday, and, and I had not seen Commissioner Emmerling, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, throughout this whole conference. On Wednesday, I get a text from a reporter that says Commissioner Emmerling filed a press release stating that she attended the CCAP conference and asked me if I wanted to add anything to it. Well, I'm still there on Wednesday, and I'm thinking, you know, I haven't seen her all week, and, you know, so, so I called back and I said, you know, I'm still here, you know, this is what I've done throughout this, this thing, and, and so, when I come back, I learned that Commissioner Emmerling did go on Sunday, but then she returned on Monday Now, this, the, you know, the conference doesn't start till Monday morning. And she got to Harrisburg, and this is her turnpike records, at 12:05 on Sunday afternoon. And she was back on the turnpike at 10:39 Monday morning. So, and the question I had, and, and trust me, folks, I, I don't want to talk about this here, but she initiated last month's meeting, I wanted to handle this in administrative fashion, with Commissioners Adetoski and myself sitting down with her. I wrote that note on her expense statement. So, it turns out that she spent $350 in the registration fee to attend a committee meeting, which you don't have to register to attend a committee meeting on Sunday. If she wanted to do that, she could have attended that meeting, stayed the night, whatever she wanted to do, and then, like she did, go back home on Monday morning and saved you $350. That was my question, and she refused to, to sit down with Commissioners Adetoski and myself to answer that. So, you know, the question is, what was the, what was the reason for her going? Was it to put in a press release to make everybody think that she attended the CCAP conference, which she did not?
What she said at the last meeting was, that she attended, that she attended the sessions and she wished to attend, and there was nothing else that she felt was interesting.
Well, that's fine. If she, if she thought that committee meeting on Sunday afternoon was important, then why waste the county's $350 for registration?
Because I went to the next day's meeting. I saw you sitting there, we listened to the same individual speak about the ethics in, ethics in county government. You sat up to the right. You sat up to the right, I sat in the back. You want me to contact other county commissioners to say who, who else I spoke with? Here, first off, the, the official CCAP conference may start on Monday. I, I serve on that committee. That is why I was there Sunday from three to five. I, as well as at least nine or ten other county commissioners from across the state, serve on committees of CCAP. There's a governance committee, there's a tax assessment committee, there's a number of committees. They asked me to participate, I did. I'm actually on the committee. I've been named to the committee for 2013 because of my attendance and because of my input. So, yes, I got off at nine o'clock, I left, I left Union Town around, I don't know, nine, nine-thirty, I don't remember, this is back in August. I drove to the conference, okay, and I attended that committee, governance committee meeting from three to five. In the evening, there are, there are things that go on. So, I just dispelled what he said. I mean, he said that you, you don't have to attend, you could just attend if you want to. I'm appointed there. The CCAP appointed me, okay? So, and then, and then, and then on, and then on Monday, I went to another breakfast meeting, I was at my breakfast meeting, he was at his breakfast meeting.
I did not attend the Democratic caucus meeting on the morning.
I, I was at that meeting, and then I went to the ten o'clock meeting, listened to what the individual had to say. And in the evening, a Sunday evening and Monday morning, I went through the vendor's exhibit. Now, Commissioners Amber Cini said, well, you could just have downloaded it, all the information from the internet. No, you can't, you have to pay for the materials. And in the meantime, those that I chose not to attend, like, one of the, one of the committing, one of the conferences, as I said, was, now you're, that you're in office for seven months, what, is it all that you expected? Well, of course, I'm not going to attend that meeting.
There's plenty of other breakout sessions that are very important.
And I had, I had-
In fact, Mr. Mazza, the, the most important thing is, you know, I spent three days there.
Good, you're a first-year commissioner, you should.
And, and I, I will, I can tell you this, that every, there's multiple breakout sessions at any given time throughout, throughout the course of, of that conference. And my biggest problem was, you know, I would have wanted to go to two or three of them, you know, at each, at each time that was scheduled throughout the day. It's, it's, it's very hard to, to actually select the most important one that you want to, because they're all important.
Because they all overlap time.
And I can tell, I can tell you that, you know, information is continually evolving. So, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to spend $350 to register, you probably ought to take advantage of the information that they're going to offer at the next day.
And I did, and I did. I had the materials, and I did take advantage, and I spoke with fellow county commissioners. We discussed many things in the timeframe that I was there, and I chose to return instead of staying a second day. It's $350 for your materials, and that is what I got, plus I attended meetings. And I-
The $300 if she were-
It's the registration for the three thousand things of our nature.
One thing I want to say, I've been coming to these meetings for many, many years, and I've seen many expense accounts put in, this is the first time in all the years that I've come to these meetings, that I've ever heard anybody's expense account or expenses rejected, rejected.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't refuse to have-
I've never heard anybody expense account, or anybody ask, ask anybody to put in a, a request to have their expenses reimbursed.
I have several conversations about ask, at-risk bridge funding. I've had, I had conversations with many of those commissioners, we talked about gel overcrowding, many things, so, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's amazed, it's not amazing to me, I know why.
This is my turn, huh? It's my, it's the first time, and I'm, I'm saying in almost eighteen years, that I've ever heard anybody's expense, expenses being rejected. I've never heard them being rejected ever before. And nobody's ever asked where you were, what you did, or anything else. They just accepted them and paid them.
When you send somebody to a conference, whether it be Children and Youth, or the Tax Bureau, or whatever department, they go on these little meetings, and you, and the county picks up their expenses. What assurance do you have that they go out there and attend the meetings that they're supposed to be in, rather than gallivanting around the town that they're in? You have none. And without question, their expenses are paid. So, I don't know why you're picking on me.
And we don't know why.
I can tell you, I can tell you why.
And the reason I didn't stay for the, for the third day is because it's a dinner, okay? You know what most of the day took, took?
Well, you didn't even stay for the second day.
Right.
Or you, or you didn't even stay for most-
I did.
I mean, first of all, according, from turnpike to turnpike, at Hershey, she was there for a total of 22 hours and 34 minutes.
I, I don't set the rate of the registration, for the registration of CCAP.
But you don't have to register if you're, I mean, that's a pretty expensive, and if you're just going to go and listen to part of the, of the keynote speaker, which talked about ethics, and I'm, you know, I-
Yeah, I'm glad you stayed, I hope you had your ears open.
I did, and I, I was disappointed that, that you didn't apparently take that into account.
How much were your expenses?
The same, except I had two, except I stayed for the conference, which was two more nights.
Say that.
So, two more, two more nights.
That was over $1,000.
Right, he stayed, he stayed two nights, I stayed one, and we both paid $350 for the registration.
To answer your question, I think that, you know, the, the cost of the county of about, besides your expense statement, you had a company car, and of course, the EZ Pass, which resulted in about $725 or so of expenses, to stay there less, less than twenty, 22 hours and 34 minutes.
In all my years of a commissioner in 2004, you go pull, I do not turn in any expenses, and I use my own car very infrequently, and, and you can pull them, since you've got turnpike records, and it takes your time to do that, go and pull and see what expenses I've turned in. I'm the most fiscally responsible commissioner, I have been in many years. I don't even take a pay raise.
I've never, I've never turned in a request for reimbursement, so, I've never turned in a request of mine.
He has.
Mr. Mazza.
So, I mean, I just want to make sure you-
Well, you don't go to the CCAP for-
I have a child, you know, fortunately here. My child is my number one priority.
First incident that I can recall that somebody was refused their expense, expenses they incurred.
Mr. Mazza, in my, during my career, I've probably signed over, well over a thousand expense statements. And if I would have seen a stunt like this pull-
It's not a stunt, and I take offense to that, because I-
It would have resulted in disciplinary action.
Oh, get out. Seriously, seriously, you need to sep, you need to separate yourself from Allegheny Power General or whatever.
Okay, this is starting to get personal.
And county government is what you need to separate yourself from.
This is starting to get personal.
You don't know what, what meetings I, what materials that I've brought in on risk-
Commissioners, I make, I make a motion to-
And what discussions I have with my fellow commissioners.
I make a motion to, this is getting personal now, and it's crossing the line.
It was personal the day that you didn't sign in and turn.
Mr. Adetoski, I have the floor. I'm still-
No, contrary, the chairman has the floor at all times, under Robert's rules. The chairman has the floor at all times.
Pause and pause for public comment, I'm not completing my public comment.
Mr. Mazza, if you have something new to say?
I have something, I have another question I want to ask. The question I want to ask is, the townships have all gotten money from the impact fee. And I'd like to know, well, what I'd like to know is, is how, how did, how did some, some of the, some of these townships get over, way over $300,000 in impact fees?
That was the time by the state.
And, yeah, I understand that, but I, I wanted to know if you knew what, what it was based on, how they, how they based, how they betted, because some townships got $30,000, some townships got $387,000.
Mr. Mazza, it was based on the number of wells being drilled in their municipality.
And also, also their roads. And some of the problems is, is they've classified some, for some of the ones that didn't get as much, they were classifying some of their- as much, they were classifying some of their, their roads as turnarounds and not roadways. And that reduced some of the funding that they were supposed to be receiving from the state.
Well, if they're determined by wells, how much a well?
It's the activity of the well. I, I don't know what the formulary is, Mr. Mazza.
Well, I, well, I know Act 13 is the stupidest law that they ever passed, ever. But, but I just wondered how they determine, certain township's got, what, $387,000?
Germantownship got $300,000, no, Republic, Redstone Township got $300,000, Germantownship got $250.
There are dozens of wells out in-
Uniontown got $20,000.
Yeah, well, they got $18,000 less, there's no wells in Uniontown. They got $18,000 less than Franklin Township. Franklin Township has dozens of wells. And they, and the roads now, $38,000 won't, won't build a road a mile.
Oh, it was a bad-
And they tell you now, and they're still drilling, they're still drilling.
It was a bad law, and, and it needs to be, needs to be reviewed. And I hope the legislature, the general assembly does.
The best way to do it is the way New York did it, on production.
Hopefully, they contacted their legislator at the time before they passed it.
You know they did. I did.
Again, before-
We have a 1/30, we have rezonings, two of them are very important, the multi-dwelling and the Marcel Shell ordinance. That's at, I think, 2/15, I think our first one starts at 1/30.
Again-
It's 12:30 now.
I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, healthy New Year. God bless you all.
Am I due to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, am I allowed to speak?
Yes, didn't, didn't see your hand.
Going back to Angela's expenses. I'm on the law of boards, school board, housing board, worked chief of security 30 years for Laurel Highlands, was on the board with Angela many years with the housing. You couldn't get her to go on a trip. And the one that I forced her to go to Harrisburg, she paid for her own. She would not take a penny. I see a lot of waste coming to these meetings, coming to school board meetings, and I'm not perfect. But when you're squabbling over her going to a meeting for the little bit of money, and I see where she's coming from, she did not want to spend the money for those two nights, because I know her. So she went to what was important to her. I'm not taking up for Angela or Mrs. Sabatowski. I'm just saying, being on all the boards that I'm on, believe me, I see so much waste in this county, on all boards. And it's sad. It is sad. And, and like Mr. Mastis said, an attorney for $4,000, and all this raising taxes, and all the things of, where is the money going? And I feel terrible that you would put her out in the public on, on-
I didn't put her out.
No, you did!
I wanted to, I wanted to-
Al, I am shocked, I am shocked at you. I am really shocked. Wait a minute. When, I, I'm going to say this.
I wanted to handle this as minister-
Usually, I don't say nothing.
It was Commissioner Zimerlink that brought it out in the public.
Well, she should be paid.
And I want to make that point crystal clear.
Let me say one thing. I am surprised that you would accuse her of fraud or whatever. That, that is not right.
I just asked.
Because she is one of the most honest people I've ever known in my lifetime. I don't have anything to say. I've never said a word about Mr. Sabatowski. I've never said a word about you. But that, to your fellow person sitting there, that is awful. That's all I got to say.
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Merry Christmas, everyone, happy holidays.